Well, hello, everybody. Welcome to the City Hall Council Chambers. It's great to see so many people here. We have just a couple items of regular business before the party keeps going. So I'm on speaker. That's all that really matters. People on Zoom can hear us, so the record will be able to hold us. And welcome, everybody. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We start meetings with an invocation, which we observe by a moment of silence, but baby sounds are awesome. And then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thanks, everybody, for joining us this evening. We have a couple items of regular business, and then we'll move into the reason that we're all here today in packed chambers. First, Clerk, will you call the roll?
Agent.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present.
And next up, we have a request for approval minutes from our work session and evening meeting of March 7.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the work session and the regular evening meeting minutes of March 7, 2023.
Second.
You have a motion of second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And next up, under Special Business, we have the reappointment of Patrick Falls to the Plumbing Mechanical and Fuel Gas Code Board for a four-year term ending March 2027. Patrick, are you here with us or on Zoom? I really appreciate that you're willing to re-up for another term. I'm in with that. I'll take.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I ask unanimous consent for the reappointment of Patrick Falls to the Plumbing Mechanical and Fuel Gas Code Board for a four-year term ending March 2027.
Without objection. Well, thank you, Mr. Falls, very much for your service. And now we'll head into the Boise City Council, sitting as Board of Corrections to hear and correct assessments levied for the operation and maintenance of the Boise City Municipal Irrigation System for the 2023 irrigation season. And we've got Mr. Purdy with us tonight. Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name's Jim Purdy. I'm the city engineer. And I'm here tonight to speak about the Boise Municipal Irrigation District. The city of Boise operates and maintains 14 pressure irrigation systems, serving 375 lots. And recently, we also incorporated one gravity irrigation ditch that delivers water to an additional 29 properties. So per state code, the city council acts as the Board of Directors for the municipal irrigation district. And tonight, you're sitting as the Board of Directors to allow property owners an opportunity to dispute their assessment and correct any errors in the assessment. This year, for Water Year 2023, the assessment rate remains unchanged at $935 per acre. The last rate change for that was back in 2018. In addition, there's another assessment for the gravity ditch users, which will be $60 per lot, applied to each lot. And this assessment rate was established through an agreement with the Now Dissolved Eustach Lateral Association. So assessments were mailed out in early March, and staff is not aware of any errors in the assessment. Next, with your permission, the floor should be open to anyone who feels there has been an error in the 2023 assessment. If no one reports any errors in their assessment, it is recommended you formally note no corrections were needed.
Thank you. Is anyone here for this?
I feel like that was an objection.
I think there were some objections just now. All right. If the record will reflect that nobody has objected, do we need to take a motion to close this out? Or we just have that be reflected?
Just be reflected. Madam Mayor, along with, yeah, just as long as we know there were nobody here who had any questions or protest to these.
And just to be sure, I'll make sure that nobody, is there anybody online that is here for this item? All right. With that, we will note that nobody has arrived to object to their levies.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, there is one item that we've been asked to remove and vote on separately. That would be Resolution 14423. So I move that we remove that from the consent agenda and that we approve the remaining items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And now if was it, we'll pick up the other resolution?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I now move that we approve Resolution 14423, approving an agreement of award for RFQ 23145 miscellaneous planning services between the city of Boise and Opticoz Design.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Madam Mayor, don't we need discussion?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be important.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So oftentimes, when these items are taken off the consent agenda, it's because someone would like more discussion on them. And I really appreciate the constituent who brought this up. Something that probably wasn't noted is that last week, we had 10 different RFQs like this, where we're really trying to beef up the planning department because we have lots of interest in ensuring that we have building in Boise, and we need more capacity. And this particular award is just an addition to that. So we'll have 11 different firms that are doing that. It's not a PR contract. It really is a get-to-business-and-review contract. So it's a great opportunity for us to clarify what this contract is, what it's for. And I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity for us to also get more of those projects through the pipeline. I'd like to thank the constituent who brought it to our attention because it's an opportunity for us to clarify what we're trying to do within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
And now we'll move into ordinances. We've done on first, but we do have several on second reading.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on the second reading calendar be read by number and titled only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-12-23, An Ordinance Amending Boise City Code Title I, Chapter 4, Section 2, Entitled General Penalty to Update the Infraction Penalty Enumerated Therein to Match the Idaho Code and Providing an Effective Date. ORD-13-23, An Ordinance Amending Boise City Code Title VI, Chapter 16, Entitled Loud Amplification Devices Upon or Within Vehicles, Amending the title of the chapter to vehicle amplified sounds, amending Section 1 to refine the purpose and add the scope of the chapter, amending Section 2, Subsection A, and adding new subsection B that sets forth the prohibited vehicular amplified sound, amending Section 3 to clarify the exemptions to prohibitions, repealing Sections 4 and 5 and renumbering the subsequent provisions accordingly, amending the penalty provisions, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date. ORD-14-23, An Ordinance Amending Boise City Code Title VI, Chapter 17, Excessive Exhaust and Muffler Noise, Amending the scope of the chapter, amending and replacing certain definitions contained within the chapter, repealing Title VI, Chapter 17, Sections 5 and 9, and renumbering the subsequent provisions accordingly, amending existing muffler exhaust requirements and prohibitions and adding a new prohibition subsection, amending the penalty provisions of the chapter to provide for a misdemeanor penalty on subsequent violations of this chapter within a year, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date. ORD-15-23, An Ordinance CAR 22-00029 for property located at 9181 South Federal Way, annexing 12.89 acres of certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Boise City, establishing and determining the land use classification of said 12.89 acres as M-1D, light industrial with designer view, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such annexation and zone change, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Auditor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, providing that a copy of said legal description and map of said annexed lands and territory be recorded with the Ada County Recorder and filed with the Ada County Assessor and Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing an effective date.
Thank you. And now we've got one on third reading.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that further reading of Ordinance 1123 be dispensed with, and the record reflect that it has been read for the third time in full.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
ORD-11-23, An Ordinance CAR 22-00018 for property located at 800 West State Street, amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from L-OD, limited office with designer view, to C-5DD/DA, central business with downtown designer view and development agreement. Zone sitting source of reasoned statements in support of this zone change and providing an effective date.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Ordinance 1123.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And I am going to ask for a point of personal privilege because there's nothing under unfinished or new business. But I want to take this time, actually, before we adjourn, to, I don't know. I think that there's probably a play on words, Elaine, that it's both unfinished business and a lot of new business ahead. But we've got a couple surprises in store as we honor the incredible legacy and impact that Councilmember Elaine Clegg, our council president for a time, and now Councilmember Clegg, has had for the city. I'll have more to say in a little bit, but we've got a video first that I'd like to share.
You can't look around this city and not see Elaine's fingerprints everywhere, from things as big as Halls Gulch to things that round this city and not see Elaine's fingerprints everywhere, from things as big as Halls Gulch to things as small as sidewalk connections that neighborhoods might not otherwise have. You know, her attention to detail has just been amazing.
You know, I don't think there's another public servant that has served at City Hall that has done more than you. And not just for the citizens, but for parks and open space and libraries, and yes, trees. If trees could talk, they would say, "Thank you."
Elaine and I first started working closely together probably four or five years ago. It was after a big storm came through Boise in the summertime. It particularly hit the southeast portion of Boise pretty hard. Elaine reached out to me directly and just kind of asked about replanting efforts. How do we go about replanting trees that have since been damaged or uprooted in the storm? And that kind of kickstarted us working together and kind of rolled into the City of Trees Challenge.
Hey, Mom. We are so happy to be here, celebrating with you 20 years. Can't believe it. When you first ran for council, we thought you were crazy. But then it quickly became apparent how many people in the city love you and how much you love the city.
Thanks, Mom, for all your service. We are so proud of you. You've really served the community since I was aware of it.
Thank you, Mom, so much for all of your service throughout our entire lives, all of the help that you did throughout school and coaching, and now the inspiration that you have provided through your leadership in our community.
Thank you, Mom, so much for your service all this time to the public. It's kind of an amazing thing you don't always see to dedicate so much effort and time throughout your life to the community. What a great example for our kids and for all of us. We're so proud.
The thing I always appreciated most, Elaine and I, I mean, we agreed on a ton of stuff, and we could get into it on other issues and fight like cats and dogs. But we always moved on to the next thing because there always is a next thing. And we settle it by just sitting down and remembering why we were doing what we were doing. That's a rare gift these days.
I truly appreciate our time that we had together all 12 years, serving. I was able to absorb your knowledge and get your input. And it made the experience all that much better and the accomplishments something great for the people that we serve.
Hi, Elaine. This is Dave Everly. I'm sure you don't remember me anymore after being away for so long. We thought we were going to have to haul you out by your votes from council, but you surprised us with getting a plum job with Valley Regional Transit, for which I am very grateful. You are going to be the perfect person for that. And I'm so happy for you to take on this new challenge.
And VRT could not have a better person coming in to run that operation. Her passion for transit is well-known in the community, and I think she's going to do a great job.
I want to wish you luck on your next adventure. Well, you certainly don't need luck. You will be taking Valley Regional Transit to a whole nother level, just like you did the city of Boise.
Good luck. Great job. Thanks for all your service. You've been fun to work with.
Well, I hope you liked the video. In it, in it, I guess we kind of spilled the beans a little early, but we were also handing out stickers in Elaine's honor and really in recognition of the legacy that you have that goes so much further than trees. But trees is such a big part of it. As you saw in there, in the next, was it 10 years, we'll be planting 100,000 trees in Elaine's name. The, or in the name of the challenge that will now be called the Elaine Clegg City of Trees Challenge. And we do this, Elaine, because you championed our goals of doubling our tree canopy. You championed the City of Trees Challenge, as it was. And really, as we, as council leadership and council members and I spoke, we saw no better way, truly, to honor the impact that you've had because it will last, the impact of this program will last so much longer than any of us. And so the new name, and then I'd like, I'd love for council members, I know they have some things to say, but the new name of our City of Trees Challenge is the Elaine Clegg City of Trees Challenge. So if you didn't get a sticker on your way in, please take some. I'm home, and I'm going to kick it over to Council President Woodings, I think. We didn't do a run of show, so I'm kind of making this up. But I think that you want to add something to the conversation about the City of Trees Challenge.
Yeah, I do have, I do have something to add. And I think I'll just wrap my comments and my addition all into one thing. So I remember back in the late 2000s when I met Elaine. And I was young. I was on the Northern Neighborhood Association. We were doing some kind of bratty stuff at the time. And Elaine was very direct in her, in her disapproval of what we were doing. Very direct. She and Mary Ann both. But you know what? I still remember that, and I still appreciate it every single day. But because they were also very forgiving and gracious with me and my youth and my enthusiasm. And so I think that since then, I've counted both of them as mentors, particularly Elaine, because I've been able to work with her for years now on city council. And I really counted on her expertise in so many areas, her mentorship as we've served here together and as I've become a leader on this council. We've served on boards and commissions together and here on the dais. And I've always really appreciated her steadfastness and her expertise in most matters, most all the matters. Like Elaine really knows them all. So it's pretty impressive, particularly her leadership on transportation, her leadership on trees, planning and zoning issues. And, you know, every, everything that the city touches beyond that will really benefit the city for many generations. And Mary Ann brought up pathways. That's, you know, when we look at a, at a planning and zoning issue, Elaine's always got an eagle eye on where the sidewalk connections are going to be and how children are going to access, you know, the next street over. And if there's a way that we can create that, and that'll be missed. We have big shoes to fill as we're looking over those applications. So on behalf of the city council, we would like to present Elaine with this beautiful sycamore tree. Sadly, it is stick season right now. And so it looks a little bit sad. But I can guarantee you, this tree is going to go back to the city nursery, where it's going to live for another year or two. Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And then it will be planted in the park of Elaine's choice and commemorated with a plaque for Elaine's leadership in the City of Trees Challenge and her leadership on making our urban canopy just the best and most beautiful it can possibly be. So that's your tree, Elaine. We know you love sycamores.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh.
And so in closing, I just want to thank Elaine and for everything she's done for, for me, for the city, for all of us up here on the dais, and wish her the very, very best at VRT. And I just can't believe we still get to keep working together. So lucky. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I don't have any extra surprises or gifts. I did help carry the tree into the building. And I didn't realize how tall it was, Patrick and I didn't, until we set it up. And there it is, leaning over like a too-big-Christmas tree. I was kind of trying to prepare some words for today, and I was trying to figure out how long we knew each other because we've known each other long before I was on council. So I did some research and some digging on Gmail to figure out what our first email exchange was. And it was right after we met at the train depot in 2013. The previous mayor had pulled together a group of stakeholders to talk about rail at the train depot with the U.S. Secretary of Transportation. You were there to talk about rail, to be a city council member. I was there to talk about bicycles. And that was the very first time that we met. And then we followed up afterwards to talk more about making Boise a more bicycle-friendly community. There are so many stories that I could share about all of our experiences over the years, but that would take up way too much time. So there's two things that I want to share. I want to share one thing that I learned from you. And I want to share one thing that I really appreciate about you. And both of those things are things that I'm going to take going forward. The thing that I learned from you first, I learned that it's not about how much you know, but it's about how much you keep showing up again and again and again, being willing to learn and being willing to grow. And I think about our very first time where we met, talking about rail and your ability to continue to show up again and again and again, and the opportunity that we have with rail because you never stopped showing up today. So that is one of, that's one of the things that I, that I've learned from you. The thing that I think I appreciate about you the most is I've never met somebody who's more faithful and more committed to their values. You're not just someone who wears your, your values on your sleeve. You embody them, you live them. And it's incredibly rare to see someone and admire someone living out their values in a public way every single day and never compromising on them ever. So that's one of the things that, that I truly, truly appreciate about you. I'm on the Valley Regional Transit Board now on the executive committee. So technically, I think I might kind of be your boss, if that's how it works. And, and so I know that our work together will continue, but maybe the power dynamic has flipped a little bit. But I'm really excited that, that, that your journey with the city of Boise and continuing to give back to so many people, to making Boise a better place to get around is something that's going to continue for, for years and years to come and that I get to continue that journey with you. So thank you for the gift that you've given all of us.
Madam Mayor. Well, where I come from, the sign of respect is to say nice things. But if you truly love somebody, you'll give them a little bit of a roast at occasions like this. The problem that I have is that I'm still scared to death of the lady. No, I'm full of gratitude, Elaine. And it's not, it's not just because you're retiring. I want you to know, and I want your family to know, that I've learned many things from you here, the biggest one being the vocabulary, the fact that I didn't drink and I didn't swear when I was elected. I never understood, people, what up yours meant until I watched Elaine negotiate a union contract. After all these years, Elaine, of getting kicked in the teeth and getting right back up again and helping our community, I hope you don't have a huge head about all the people here. They were told that there was a significant but widespread seniority change but widespread seniority change that might be happening any minute now. And I believe it will right after the meeting. I noticed that the cops are here, um, and I think that's to make sure that she really leaves the building. I noticed that her family is here presumably because they really wanted to find out if she'd had a job all these years. But before I end, I want to say one thing that really is heartfelt and true. When my wife and I were married, we lost our wedding venue a week before the event. And it was a little stressful, a little bit of pressure. And my wife asked me, who do we know in Boise? Who we could call on a moment's notice, ask them on a Saturday to pick up a wedding cake, package it in dry ice, drive it seven hours up to the skinny part of the state where we were getting married. And I would know that I wouldn't have to worry. And that's Elaine. The woman has never failed at anything and she certainly didn't fail at helping us. Elaine, you've been my mentor. You've been my confidant and my friend. You've helped me learn about this impossible job. You're the only person our family trusts to carry a wedding cake. I'm going to miss you dearly. And I'm so glad and so grateful for all the help that, that you've given me.
Madam Mayor, while, um, council member Bajent roasted, I will end with a toast. So I, I don't, I haven't had the experience of being dressed down by you and I feel fortunate for that. But I do have a couple of comments and I feel quite grateful that I've had the opportunity to serve with someone as legendary as yourself. You know, when I think about leadership and I think about some of the finest leaders that I know, both locally in history, they always come from a place of, um, service, but also from a time that's not great. They don't get involved at a time that was like, everything's running well and the trains are running on time. They step up in a time where things are rough. And I remember being, you know, a civilian, you know, in, in the Treasure Valley, when you stepped up to help fix Boise in a really difficult and frankly shameful time. And you stepped up and your, your kids thought you were crazy, but the fact is you did it. And you've created a legacy that will affect the city for years to come. So in that moment where you said, I'm ready, I'm going to lead, I'm going to make this city what it needs to be. You've changed it in profound ways and, um, I know that I'm grateful. My children are grateful. Your grandchildren are grateful. And that's a legacy that will live on far beyond. On a personal note, I'd like to tell you that I've, I've nicknamed Elaine Boise's Google because, um, I remember, you know, right after I got elected, we went on this walkabout, um, with Rhodes and she's like, well, over there you can fit forty eight thousand houses. And like it, she just pulled this out of nowhere and she does that all the time. She has this innate ability to recall facts in a way that's meaningful at a moment's notice. And even more than that, when you pull those facts, as Boise Googles, you're doing it to problem solve. And we need more problem solving and you have helped solve Boise problems and I salute you and toast you for that.
Well, and now I'm going to try to say a, a few things. I will say a few things, but Elaine, I realized how much I didn't want this to happen when people kept asking like, do you have your remarks? Do you have remarks? Like, no, 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 I'll take care of them. I got them. I got them. I didn't want to write them. I didn't want to write them. Because I didn't want actually for this, this night to, to come. It's, it's both an ending and a beginning. And I'm so excited for what you're doing now and what you're doing next because we needed you in this new way at Valley Regional Transit and to help us solve transportation issues in the region. Um, but I've been thinking a lot about this as we've talked about this, um, over the course of the last several months, about the impact that you've had and, and not, and even, I'll talk to the impact, but also most importantly to me, the model that you've created for so many of us in what a public servant is. And that model that like, as Jimmy alluded to, you live by your values, but you keep coming back to the well based on values for impact. And as, and, and I want to say to your family, like seeing all of you in the video was so cool because you grew up with your mom not home on Tuesday nights. And you know, my family talks about that. Like it was just like Tuesday nights, dad made goulash, you know, different things happened. But, but it, but you, you were doing so much for your city, but for your kids and for theirs. Um, and ultimately for all of us. And I think it was really special that, um, your family was in that video because it really is also such a family effort, um, to give and to serve. And so thanks to all of you too. But Elaine, I think we met back in probably, I'm, I'm, as, as far as I could remember, it was during the foothills campaign, I think is when we really started spending. And every Friday Elaine and Anne Howes Rath and all these other women would have me and Rachel Weiner's in here somewhere. Um, they'd like call us to soup at their house during the foothills campaign to pretty much tell us how we were doing everything wrong. And then at one point Rachel and I were like, why do we keep going? These lunches are kind of terrible. And we kept going because you kept calling us back and you kept sharing advice with us. And ultimately we knew deep down, even though it was like, oh my goodness, we're going to eat soup and in here how this week didn't go so well, that we were going to learn through it and that it was that community that all of you had then. Um, that was so special in Boise. Um, it was the community that you extended to all of us that were younger, trying to do things. Um, and it's that community that's continued to grow, um, both from this dais, but throughout the city. Um, because of everything that you've touched. And you know, when I think back to that time, it was you'd done so much already. And, and that's really why we kept coming back to those, those Friday soup lunches. Um, because you and a team of people had created a vision to, that made a plan possible for us to preserve open space. You and a team of people had made it possible to not just create a plan that helped us save more, but to protect what was referenced in Holes Gulch as that start. You and a team of people, and sometimes I think single-handedly did stuff to make sure, took action because you cared about our schools and did things to make sure we were investing in them and that they stayed open. Um, and a generation and many generations of kids now are enjoying schools that would have otherwise been closed. Um, had you not, um, jumped in when you did. When you ran for council of, I remember you decided to run and I was so excited and so many of us were. And I, I still have the, these memories of, I think it was maybe Ann Pasley Stewart's house, but it's a, it's a brick wall that I'm standing in front of as we're talking about why it was important for you to join city council. And that was still in the early days for me of knowing you, but I'd already worked with you enough to know that I wanted to be involved in that effort because you had so much to give to the city. And in those years that fall, have followed, the impact that you leave, um, is just really impossible to truly account for. Um, in some ways, that's why I wanted, um, to name the tree challenge after you because it's this mul-, it's this multiplication of, of impact that your work, um, as a mom, as a school, a PTO member, as a neighborhood leader, as a council member, as a member of different boards has had on this city and this region. And I have to say, it has been a true honor. A true honor. I'm sorry. To have grown up, being able to see a leader like you in our city. To work alongside you on many efforts, importantly to learn so much from you. I still wish I was as tough as you. Like you always just like go back in and, um, it's such a skill. And, but to have learned alongside you and then especially in the last three years as our world has faced so many challenges, to be right next to you, um, and to have you right next to me and to each and every one of us. Um, as we made really tough decisions on how to take care of this community during a pandemic. We've made great investments in housing and homelessness and safety and transit. And we've, as we've made, as this work, as we've gone through this work together, um, the constant is your commitment and your values-driven leadership and ultimately your deep belief in impact. And over the course of these years, um, as you've rolled up your sleeves as Boisians do, but in a very Elaine Clegg way, um, with such deep impact with the family behind you. Um, you have been able to change lives and you've definitely changed our city for the better. Um, and for that reason, I have one thing that I want to give you. And that is a key to our beautiful city. I want, I want to read it for everybody. So this is the first, this is the first of the, the key design that we have wanted to put together. Um, and in it also, there's the logo of the Elaine Clegg City of Trees Challenge, which will be on the plaque in the park with the tree. And then it says, in recognition of your leadership, vision and service to the city of Boise, your passion and advocacy for thoughtful land use, expanded transportation options and sustainability is visible in our parks, pathways and vibrant neighborhoods that make Boise such a special place we call home. We've renamed the City of Trees Challenge in honor of your nearly twenty years of service as a Boise city council member and your steadfast commitment to our tree canopy. And I'm going to add your commitment to ensuring that we're a city for everyone. Thank you.
Well, amazingly, I'm not crying yet. I don't know how that is. Anybody who knows me. Oh gosh. Um, I don't know where that goes. Well, what a night, what a, what a incredible, what an incredible crowd. And yes, hello Amadeus. How are you? So I need to recognize a whole bunch of people. Um, you know, I, I can't tell you how thankful I am for all of the kind words, but everyone who's been up on this dais knows that you don't do it alone. Um, it takes a team. It takes a group of people who are committed to the city. And I've been incredibly blessed. Uh, the whole twenty years I've been here to be surrounded by people who are able to put aside their own personal, um, feelings in many ways, put aside their own personal ideologies and look forward to say, what's the best thing for this city? What's the best thing we can do together to work together? I'm going to start with people on the dais. I just got to know Lucy this last little while and I didn't, I knew of her. I knew of her work at the state. I knew that, uh, she was a hardworking, principled public servant who was trying to make the state a better place. And she's brought that to the city council. We haven't always agreed, but we've always agreed to disagree when that was necessary. More importantly, she's brought with her, uh, willingness to learn, a willingness to serve, um, beyond, I think what she originally envisioned was going to be just her district. And quickly learned that this is a big city and you need to have a big view of the whole thing in order to, um, serve it well. So thank you for that. Patrick, wow. I was going to talk about the cake, but you stole my thunder. Patrick is, um, someone who came on the city council at a time when we needed what he brought. We needed his intellect. We needed his drive. We needed his ability to quickly understand how to get to the heart of an issue and dissect it for us in a way that everyone could understand. And he always did it with, um, such compassion. And yet very straightforward. That's a hard line to walk, but Patrick was always able to do it. I came to respect him and care for him so much and was so touched that he and Jen trusted Brett and I to bring the cake to the wedding, but we made it. And the wedding went off without a hitch despite all the smoke out in the, in the area around us. Um, the, the wedding site stayed, uh, just lovely and it was a wonderful time. And it showed to me how, um, what I had observed on this dais was true in a setting like that where a lot of hard work had to go into making that, uh, venue ready for a wedding in a week. And Patrick was, uh, able to step up and make that happen just like he stepped up and served this city in so many ways. I don't know what's going to happen in your future, but I hope it continues to include public service because the state needs, the city and the state need people like you. Jimmy, I, you know, I had forgotten that we met at the Ray La Hood event. I, that, what a, what a wonderful memory to bring up. Ray La Hood came to Boise to talk about, um, all kinds of things, transportation. And, uh, I had known of the Boise Bicycle Project. I've known of Jimmy's passion for bicycles, but had not met him. And what a wonderful time it was to get to know him. Um, we both worked for nonprofits in my other life. I did. And, um, together we worked on a lot of projects. When you got elected to city council, I was a little worried for you. Not because I didn't think you were up to it, but because I knew how passionate you were and how hard you worked, how much you cared. And I knew that, uh, with what you were still doing at Boise Bicycle Project, that how overwhelming that could be. And over the last, um, three years, I've watched you step up and dig in and become an incredibly talented and knowledgeable council member. Thank you for crediting me with, with the stick-to-itiveness, but I think you already had it. And you're just, uh, maybe amplifying it a little bit, but you have, uh, been a tremendous value to this city. And Holly, um, yeah, wow. Uh, there was a group called the Collaborative Visioning Group and, um, we did go meet with them as I remember and sort of, um, asked them to think about a different way to approach a particular issue. And, um, at the end of the day, that group still exists and they're still doing great work uh, for both the, uh, city and the neighborhoods they serve in helping to create the vision that, that I think many of us share. Holly was able to move on from it and come here to city council. And it's been so fun to work with you and watch you, um, your ability to get to the heart of the business part of our work that I'm not terribly good at and you're really good at. And make sure that as we do that work, we're doing it in a way that will continue to be successful and sustainable going forward because the, uh, business behind it is done in such a way that it, it creates a lasting effect. And you've brought that in ways that, um, very few people have, have in, in, in this office before you. And so thank you. Mayor McLean, yeah, we, we had a lot of, a lot of weekly meetings back in the two thousands. For those of you who don't know, I was, uh, involved in the Holes Gulch effort in the early eighties. The first effort in the foothills and then in helping plan, helping develop the foothills plan. And so those of us who'd gone through that were a little bit, um, anxious that this young group of people were kind of treading into our territory, thinking that they could pass this levy and, and, um, that, you know, with the levy, take over the work that we'd prepared for them. Actually, in the end, it was not that at all. It was that there was this great group of young people, younger than us, who were ready to step up and start that work. And in doing that, um, set your own legacy for, uh, protecting not just a three hundred acre nature preserve, but, uh, now what? Thirty seven thousand acres, um, protected. And I think ten thousand owned in the foothills, which will be a legacy that this city, uh, will treasure forever. So thank you for being willing to continue to meet with us. I have to mention that in the last three years, it has been really tough. You know, lots of, lots of big issues and this group has stepped up, um, to face those issues together without complaint, without trying to one-up each other, without, um, anything but forging ahead to try and make this city a better place. And the mayor, um, came into office at a time when, um, regardless of what she thought she was going to do, she got, uh, told what she was going to do by the world. And I think she stepped up and done it. I have to say that, the, um, your support of the City of Trees Challenge and your support of restoring passenger rail service in our city has, um, made sure that those two initiatives were able to move further and faster than they would have without that support. I think your, um, part in the passenger rail will, um, has helped, um, open doors that, that weren't opened by the effort that, that I was part of. And so thank you for that because it's going to make a tremendous difference in the future. I look forward to working with all of you in that future. I've got to talk about a couple of people in the audience and then about my family. I hope you'll indulge me a little bit longer. Couple of my fellow council members, uh, back there. Um, so I see Alan and Mary Ann. I heard that Ben was going to be here, but I haven't seen him. So I just, I don't want to miss somebody if they're here. Okay. Well, Lucy talked about that time in two thousand four, when we came into office and Alan and Mary Ann preceded us by six and nine months. And they got the worst of it. They really did. They had to dig into the scandal when there wasn't a lot of help on the way. And, um, they held the ship steady. They kept it from going under in those months till the help arrived. And I can't tell you how much difference that made in what we were able to do once, uh, the rest of the council that joined us, uh, did, including the two Daves and, and the Holdover Vern and Jerome. It, it, uh, Mayor Beeter used to describe it like being in a foxhole together. And, uh, no matter what you were before, no matter what you were going to be after, because you were in that foxhole together, it was always a different and a special kind of relationship. And I still feel that with both of you. Alan helped, um, lead the way on the smoking ban. I kind of followed along and got too much credit for it probably. But we banned smoking in places that, um, hadn't been banned yet in the state of Idaho. And I think it's made a difference in lots of people's health. Thank you. Mary Ann and I go back way before, uh, any of the rest of this, um, when we were both neighborhood leaders and, um, putting together Celebrate Community. Oh my gosh, yeah. Um, working on the Neighborhood Alliance. And then Mary Ann, I don't know what possessed her, went and served eight years on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Heaven help her. Um, there is no more thankless job in this city frankly, that you, you get all of the, the business that the city council gets and you get no pay and none of the credit, but you get all of the blame if something goes wrong. So, um, I think that steeled her for her time on city council because man, nothing ever, ever flummoxed Mary Ann, no matter what happened, until we named this chamber after her. It was the first time I ever saw us get to her. But she's made such a difference in this, um, city and such a difference in my life. life, somebody who I'll always value. There's a ton of people back in the audience that I really should recognize. I don't know that we need to go. I wish I could. I love you all. You've all made a difference in the work that I've done over the years. And without the team, that's really what has always driven me. I'm a team player. I grew up playing team sports. Without the team, nothing ever happens. You can't do it by yourself. And it's not just the team up here. It's it's the team out there. And thank you all for coming tonight. So now I've got to talk about a couple of symbols. I'm kind of a symbol person. I like, and I just lost my notes here, stupid computers that they set to go on blank after a certain time, right? I really enjoy symbolism, because it reminds me always of where I come from and where I'm going, and it keeps me grounded. I wear two rings, and those two rings are for these people up in this section, my wedding ring. My husband of many, many years that I would never have been able to do this without your support, without your being willing to take care of the home front on the nights I was gone. I know there were times it was really hard. I know there were times you complained, but most of the time you didn't. And it was all those nights that you didn't complain that leave me just really, really grateful and thankful that that you're my guy, and always will be, and such a big part of my life. On this hand, I have another ring, and it's these five kids here, and now the all the kiddos that come along with them. And I never would have believed that, growing up, that I'd be the one that had a big family. But it's been such an incredibly growth and moving and energizing experience to be your mom and your grandma and your mother-in-law. It means the world to me. And it's such a microcosm of the things that I care about and the things that I want to make better in the world. And all I have to do to know if it's worth it is to look down here and say, yeah, it is every day. Thank you for the love and the support and the caring that you bring. It's just an amazing, an amazing thing to be your mom and your grandma. My sister and her husband are here. It's a hard time for our family right now, but one of my sisters lost her husband this week. So it's so meaningful that she's here. And it reminds me to talk about some of my other symbols. This is my mother's mother's brooch given to me through my mother. And this is my father's bolo tie. He typically wore a regular tie, but his father wore bolo ties. And so he had some bolo ties as well. And these symbols remind me of why I am the person I am. My parents were the most kind and most generous to a fault people you ever met. Morality and ethics were not a question because you just did the right thing, because it was the right thing to do. And if you weren't willing to do that, then what in the heck, right? There was just, you just couldn't question that the right thing was what you had to do. And that's how they, that's how they raised me. So not living that way would be not living up to what they gave to me, which was everything that they could their whole lives, and really, really made me what they are. I think many of us share those kinds of experiences with our parents. And I think in public service, it's so important to remember that all of it is bigger than you. All of it is for someone else. All of it is to make this world a better place, to make this community a better place. And if you can, if you can keep that in the back of your mind as you move forward, it's really hard to do the right thing because it's the right thing to do. The last symbol is this scarf. And I started life as an artist. I hope to end, if I ever decide I might retire by doing some art again. Don't know if that's ever going to happen, but I hope it will. But I, I spent over a decade doing graphic design while my kids were small. And it taught me reinforced in me that solving problems is really nothing more than getting ideas, trying them out, seeing what works, throwing away the ones that fail, moving forward with the ones that don't, building on that to do something more, and then continuing to move forward till you find the thing that finally gets you where you want to go. And I think that characteristic is the one thing that's allowed me maybe to do some of the things I've done that I probably had no business doing. I'm not a trained planner. I've worked in planning for 25 years, but I'm not, that's not where my education was. I'm not a transportation engineer or planner. But again, I've worked on those issues, but I've worked on them from that artist's point of view. Where are you trying to get to? What are the things you want to try? Keep trying. Keep trying always. And if the first time doesn't work, try again, because sometime down the road, you'll find the one that does work. And that's the one that you need to go with. So I hope that's the lesson that all of you take from whatever service I've given, is that there's always a solution if you're willing to work together, if you're willing to be a team, if you're willing to remember your roots, if you're willing to do the right thing because it's the right thing to do, there's always a solution that makes your life and the life of the people around you a better one. And amazingly, I haven't cried again. I, I'm shocked. I was prepared to. With that, I don't know what more to say, except I am so excited to do what I can do to move this valley forward in the transportation world. And at the same time, I'm so sad to think that this is one of the last times I'll sit on this dais and be part of this amazing team that is the City of Boise. Bittersweet is is an overused word, but it's really true today. But I'm not going far. I'll be around. And the rain is reminding me that it's probably time to stop. Thank you all for being here, for everything you've given me over the years, for the love you've shared, the ideas you've shared, the work you've shared. It's, it means the world to me, and I wouldn't be where I am without So I get to make one more motion. But before I do that, there's lots of food and drink in the back of the room. And I hope you'll all stay and enjoy it. And thank our wonderful staff for putting that together. With that, Madam Mayor, I move adjourned.
You have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.